This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
It's 5:15. I'm gonna start the meeting. The recording has started just at the City Council Finance Committee meeting for February 8th. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the last meeting. I so move.
Oh, second.
Thank you for getting them here so quickly. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Um, I wanna talk a little bit about free cash and then I'm gonna jump to the police department's request because Bob has a meeting to get to. I hope that's okay with Chris down there. Alright. Um, I'm gonna share my screen. And this is our free cash certification. We ended up this year with $5 million, nine thousand. Um, that's probably the highest I've ever seen in my 26 years here. And I know there's a lot of reason for it. For the people who are watching, Hadal, can you explain what I have on the screen? Like, what's the undesignated fund balance? What's in that and what really contributed to this? I know there's a lot of other things.
Yes. So, the undesignated fund balance is the closer of all the expenses. Whatever we budgeted, we end up not using. The variance of that amount plus whatever we have budgeted and we collected more than budgeted closes to undesignated fund balance. There are multiple end-of-the-year closing entries to clean up the accounts and everything. So that's the beginning balance, which was ending balance of last fiscal year.
Was there not?
Yep, go ahead.
I remember seeing something that there was a $3 million debt unnecessary payment or something from FY '22 that is part of that. Am I correct?
Three million? No. The undesignated fund balance does not have anything with three million.
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought there was something that, uh... So it really is a great deal of returns from, uh... From departments that and other expenses that we didn't need for FY '22. What, and also revenue, surplus revenue, correct?
Yes, so because we planned very conservatively for our revenue estimates. So anything above and over the estimate is collected, closes to this amount. Um, this, this year, this, this is the ending balance. That's the beginning balance for free cash. But we started with 4.37 million. Then we took out all the appropriation from previous fiscal year, um, uh, free cash amount. And, um, we also took care of some of the liability accounts and some necessary budget items, which were all council voted. And after we, um, and, oh, yes, there is one more thing. Uh, we had to do a reclassification of quite a bit of entries from CARES account to the budget. That was also included in this. And that's where this 5.5 is coming from. So it's not just the surplus of leftover from the budget amount and access revenue. No, that's not it. There are more to this number. So what DLS does is they start with 5.5 million dollars, which is undesignedated fund, uh, closing, undesignedated fund balance for closing fiscal year. Then they subtract all the receivables for personal property and real estate. Because originally, when we do the budget, we estimate that this is the X amount of personal property taxes we'll be collecting and X amount of real estate, um, taxes we'll be collecting. So as of June 30th, 17,215 personal property and 403,000 in real estate is not collected. So they consider this as in deficit. That's why they subtract it. That gives them, um, and then they also take out any deficit in the accounts. So these are all the deficits which you're listing from, um...
So these are all, all of these things I'm highlighting are deficits that are subtracted from?
Yes, from, yes, from withholding to all the way to, to cash re-con variance, 607, which is totaling $68,000. Those are the deficits from various accounts.
Okay, so you did say something. I... And remind me later. Okay. There was some free cash left over from last year. How much was that about that we didn't end up appropriating?
Um, I think, hang on, I have the account. I mean, I have the detail. I think it was only few hundred thousand.
Just a couple hundred thousand. You don't have to give me exactly. I wasn't curious.
I, hang on, I, I wasn't ready for that question. Sorry.
I apologize.
Number. No, that's okay.
Don't worry about it. It's always not a million or so. We, we left a little bit in the kidding. And you did say something that I didn't realize hasn't happened in other years. The CARES money, the federal money, has to be also accounted for. And it turns into free cash rather than staying. It doesn't turn over and stay in CARES, uh, accounts?
No, um, we, we were supposed to use up all the money. But what happened was we originally paid out of the budget account. So I had to do a lot of reclassification so we, we don't lose money to state. And that happened after June 30th. So I had to reclassify expenses for 2021 and 2022 to, because I can't put 2021 back into the budget. I had to do an, to undesignated fund balance. With 2022, there were departments, originally they thought that they used up pretty much all of the money or majority of it. But then when I did the reclassification, they end up having surplus in their budget account because we were trying to use up the state money.
Just let me follow up. So if I understand you correctly, you reclassified a lot of the department budgets using state CARES money and maybe there's federal money. That why, that's why there was so much money left over in some of the department budgets, which turned into free cash. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, you did.
We're gonna ask the question.
Sure. I mean, um, I'm still learning some, so just to keep up with some of the, the accounting stuff. But I guess my, my main question is, uh, with the things that are different, particularly accounting for the CARES Act, does that, uh, provide, does that, um, come with any restrictions on how we should be treating this free cash versus free cash in a different fiscal year?
No, it's all, uh, financial management, what we do at, as a financial team. It's certified. The certified amount is five million. It, it's, um, it, it... So in any CM, then, the way it works is recommendations are brought to the finance meeting, internal finance meeting, and mayor makes the decision. And that's what gets, uh, put forward to city council.
So I think just to follow up on Tom's question, the DOR allows you to reclassify department budget expenses to CARES money when you reclass, when you redo the, when you do the, uh, end-of-year accounting. You're allowed to do that.
Well, this was a special, yeah, this was a special case. We had to do the full, um... Because we were one of the 12 communities who were, um, chosen, um, in Massachusetts for desccoted. And that's where, um, I was able to reclassify all of these. And we found, we learned this just in time before I was ready to close. If I would have, uh, done the close already, then this would have been 2023 money.
And the state would have taken back the money, if I understood you correctly. Way to go, Hadal.
Well, it was a team effort. Uh, mayor was on this, um, this whole thing with, with me and, you know, everybody put the team effort in it. Yeah.
Jess, was there any debt reclassification involved then that ended up giving us?
No.
We, we didn't, we, we paid the debt money that was in the budget as, as needed. There was no change in structure of the debt or anything like that.
Nothing in 2022.
Okay. But you are doing something this year, which helps with that.
Uh, there's nothing in 2023.
Okay. The budget is the budget.
The budget is.
Okay, good. Anybody, do you have any other questions on free cash? So the other part of this is so the public knows, the free cash quote-unquotes for the enterprise account is what's known as retained earnings. And after you subtract all of this, we get 2 million, 30,000, which probably isn't nearly enough to cover what they need to do in, uh, DPW, but... So the people know that's the, uh, that's the amount we have in the water sewer enterprise account. Okay, I have no questions on free cash, except that it's an incredible amount. Because this money was there, I know you don't know, but maybe you do, mayor. This isn't gonna happen.
It's not. No.
We can't expect 5 million every, I mean, never happened before, but because of all the state money.
Yeah. Unless we have another giant pandemic that has responded.
Yeah.
No, this is a, a high point that will, I don't know how it would ever be repeated.
So I promised the chief that I would jump to his, uh, thing first because he said he had another meeting. And that's this one right here. Um, we have basically a retirement. You just wanna go over it? It seems straightforward to me, chief.
Sure. So the amount for the retirement is a total of $48,132.24. It's accrued vacation time and accrued sick, uh, time expense. It's almost 50/50. Its vacation time is $25,009.17 and the sick time is $22,214.88.
The other expenses on here, are they for the retiree or are these are just different expenses?
Those are different expenses.
You're trying to cover your budget deficits in these areas.
Exactly. And the other, the other expenses are for two, um, officers, um, that are, one's in the academy and one's going. So their academy expenses and equipment expenses for the academy, which are not budgeted. And, um, we hired a full-time police officer that had contractual equipment expenses and, um, psych lodge filling and replacement exam expenses.
So anybody watching would understand, a lot of these expenses I'm circling here are because of the union contract.
Correct.
They get medical expense, well, obviously, uniform expenses, education, training expenses, et cetera.
Yes.
And we have an old bill, a medical bill?
Yeah, we had an old medical bill that came in after, after the, uh, after the year's end. And that was for, um... It was multiple vaccinations for a rabies exposure. One of our officers got bit by a raccoon.
Wow.
Yeah.
You okay?
Yeah.
That's good, cuz I had that happen. You don't want those shots.
No.
I was a little kid and I remember it like it happened yesterday.
Yeah, that officer was not thriving from those shots.
Stunk. Anyway, uh, anybody have any questions? Anything you wanna say, mayor?
Uh, no, I mean, I would just...
You are his backup after.
I, I was just gonna say, I, I will back up, uh, Chief Alberti, um, and in those expenses, the contractual, um, I do, I'll say now and I'll say at the budget hearings, um, with the amount of free cash and what, how I distribute it or whatnot, I would expect, um, DPW, Fire and Police, you will see them for additional appropriations throughout the year. Um, so we can hold the budget line tight and, um, rather than put it all into the budget and then sweep it to free cash. So this is a great example because I think this is the appropriation that had cars in it.
It is.
It is. Yeah, it, it is. Um, and we're changing, we're going to a fleet operation. So the cars purposely, as with DPW and Fire, are taking out of the appropriations in free cash and putting them into one huge capital expense. Um, once we get that figured out, there will be cars that we need to buy right away, that we can't wait to flip in three years. So that might well be appropriations that come right.
Say capital expense, we looking at that, I was gonna act as later, the capital stabilization account? Or you're just gonna use free cash to pay? When you get them all together?
I, I don't know. I mean, the main thing is to get it all in one capital project and then figure out, you know, how to, like, how many cars can we flip to hybrids and electric? And what do we, like, DPW, we need to buy them trucks right now cuz the trucks they have are, you know, OA, looking at mileage, at, you know, police cars and, and whatnot. So, um, we're working with a, um, a group, uh, movie V out of MIT to put the carbon, decarbonization plan that will prioritize what we need to flip over first. So I pulled all of the vehicles out. And certainly, all the department heads understood 100%.
So now that's on, on this agenda?
Nope. So that's why you don't see that. But I am telling you, you will eventually see it.
I was gonna ask, when we got to the capital stabilization, what your intent was for that. I think I hear some of it. So if we ever need it, but, okay, um... So it's not on this agenda, so I'm not gonna bring up overtime, but just try to keep track of that.
We all keep track of that.
I hate overtime.
Chair rest.
I'd rather hire a bunch of people, but anyway, that's just me. Okay, uh, I have no other questions. Tom, you have any other questions?
No, this all seems pretty inevitable.
Omar, good. Okay, then I move that we send to the full council appropriation of $73,390 to be appropriated from free cash to various police accounts through the retirement of an officer and other budget deficits.
Second.
Um, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next one, I'm gonna go to the fire, so he doesn't have to stay either. He's such a nice guy.
Thank you all.
Bye, chief.
Thanks. Oh, Bob, the next council meeting, this is it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just did. Thank you.
Go ahead, chief. You're up. I have it up on the screen.
Oh, thank you. Um, so as mentioned earlier, we have our mid-year request for the supplemental appropriation. Kind of walking down through the wide items to kind of explain for the finance committee as well as the public a bit more detail what those mean. When you look at the first one, miscellaneous professional technical services, for our EMS billing, that's done by third party billing agency. And they're paid a certain percentage of what we collect. So just to give you the, the quick back history, two and a half years ago, the city of East Hampton was averaging around $713,000 a year in EMS collections. Then in 2021, we brought in around $915,000. Then FY '22, last year, we brought in just over 1.2 million. And then this year, our projections are showing revenue collections up over 1.4 million. Uh, so obviously, as more revenues coming into the city general fund, um, that's increasing the line item of that particular service for billing right there. In terms of supplies, again, um, one of the certainly negative impacts operationally that COVID had on emergency services was the inflation of, uh, day-to-day use of supplies. Um, I believe I used the example previously, a case of gloves. Um, prior to COVID was easily under $100 a case. Now, on average, it's around $275 a case. Just to give you one example.
Are they coming from China?
The cost of inflation for
They are.
For those NMS supplies. So that's to help get us through that, that dollar measure this end of the year, uh, this fiscal year for supplies. I also wanna explain and let the public know through the finance committee, this year, we also partnered with the city of Westfield and PDAB on with their procurement contracts. So being a larger community, um, we utilize the same company they do. So we're basically getting those same rates at that larger community that we otherwise probably wouldn't have seen. So in terms of collaborative, collaborative purchasing, we could look at that option as well. And then the last component for that is through our relationships with NEMA and the Department of Public Health. We have in the last six months, um, came for free for 30,000 boxes of gloves. As I mentioned earlier, the cost of gloves, through our relationships, we've gotten 30,000 boxes for free based on their storage patches on the COVID-19 outbreak that they were looking to.
$250 a box?
Uh, no, that's a case of 10 boxes and a case.
$25 a box?
Yep. We just received 30,000 boxes of gloves. So my, my point is to the community, to this committee, we are continuing to look at every other available options out there to, to bring that number down. The maintenance agreements, um, those are the EMS maintenance agreements that are required by the state license. Um, the state came in the couple weeks ago, did our annual inspection. That went very well. One of the things they look for is ongoing maintenance agreements. These agreements include the power structures, the power loads, CPR machines, the current monitors, so you make sure they're fully covered and functioning properly. The educational lineup of 3,500, that's a contractual requirement for people, um, going back to school. They get reimbursed partial for tuition. The sick leave buyback, that is a contractual obligation for a retirement or a day staff run. That number includes both the vacation buyback and the sick leave buyback. The repairs to vehicles, that is for engine one and ladder one. Those two vehicles being the oldest in the fleet, the ladder is a million-dollar ladder truck. The engine is a 2003 engine. Um, off that, we brought in mechanics from K&amp;E. They have some significant electrical issues that need to be replaced on engine one. The big one is the digital readout display that actually, um, shows how much is being brought into water supply and how much being pumped out. And then on the ladder, um, the big one is the control. You can control the air operation both from the ground by the engine and on the platform. The controls on the platform are not working. So those are the two big repairs for those vehicles.
Do I have a big question? I realize you don't put a lot of miles on these, thank God, cuz that would be, you're up, fighting fires all the time. But what's the life of these? In 2003, it's 21, that's the, we're already 23, which is 20 years old. I mean, so this isn't a lot of money for repairs compared to a million dollars for a truck. So I have no problem with that. I'm just curious, what are we looking at replacing any of these vehicles in? Pretty soon or?
So as part of the mayor's citywide capital plan, engine one in particular is a priority at least for fireside for our capital plan. When you look at the International City and County Management Association, they look at these engines and they give it a lifespan of 20 years with five years of reserve. So, you know, 2003, you, you're gonna exceed that.
Does that decertify it in some way?
It does not decertify it. It basically exceeds all standards that are out there.
What about ladder one? How old is that?
Ladder one's the same thing. If you're in a ladder, sort of 25 years, they give that 20 years. That's a 2008.
Oh, so we have two years for that.
So, um, I had ongoing conversations with the mayor and her financial team. And we're looking to prioritize down the road in terms of our fleet, the engine first, um, engine one being in 2003. Um, I'm dying to start.
And I know that you're...
Any questions, councilor, rest on that?
Uh, you did. And I, I'm only just, because people are wondering why are we repairing a 2003 truck? Well, because it costs a lot and that's not a lot of money to repair it. On the other hand, I know you also get grants. You've got great grants for the ambulances. You get grants. So you're probably doing that as well, right, to replace these trucks?
So coincidentally, um, we, we are taking delivery of one of the ambulances, probably in two weeks. That was grant-funded last year. Yesterday, we submitted grants for all new something breathing apparatus and air compressor at $365,000. And we submitted a grant for a new brush truck yesterday at $350,000. Those are the Homeland Security Grants, the mayor and I had ongoing conversations about that. Um, so those were literally submitted yesterday. Um, those are very competitive grants across the entire country. Out of about 10,000 grants, they usually award about 2,000. I always am optimistic, but I guess to answer your question, we're always looking to find additional.
It would be nice if we didn't have to buy a $1 million ladder. Well, it's kinda cost more than a million dollars in 2000.
Right, right now, with the engine and the ladder, um, based on our fleet and the overall age of the fleet, we're not positioned quite yet to be a priority for those federal grants for the engine or ladder. If you go back and look for the ambulance where we got it, at that time, we were positioned, based on the years, the mileage and use and all that, that that positions you much higher to be considered for a grant. So...
And it's safe for your firemen and for the city to continue to use these vehicles cuz you're gonna repair them until they are prioritized for federal grants.
Yeah, we, we have a great relationship. I, I certainly wanna recognize Dennis Ruth here and the motor repair staff to the DPW. They do an excellent job advising us. This work here, because it's so technical and time-consuming, it's gonna be done by Kami of Albany, who is the vendor for these vehicles. Uh, but certainly, the day-to-day routine stuff to keep these in service, um, it should be recognized that Dennis and his staff down there do an excellent job to keep these safe and reliable.
I didn't know they worked on your fleet. I thought it was all the other vehicles. Those are big work, and big engines.
And not only the engines, if you think about the ambulances, which are out thousands and thousands of times a year.
Oh, they put the miles on.
Those, our 2018 ambulance has over 120,000 mile run right now.
Didn't we replace it?
We have two new ambulances coming.
That's what I mean.
That's the third one, I think, that, that is gonna need to, and again, not to go off topic in the agenda, but in terms of our capital plan, that also needs to replace because on a daily basis, all three ambulances are out at the same time.
Okay.
So...
But you wanna continue to firefighting?
Equipment, at least where we left off. So we just hired two new firefighters. Uh, they completed their free orientation. They're starting the academy on March 23rd. That will go basically through the end of June. So that request there for the equipment will get them all of their new protective gear, their flashlights, their radios, their pagers, um, and their, uh, class B uniforms. And then the other, uh, component of that lineup is the ballistic protection equipment. So we recently did a collaborative training, um, program with East Hampton Police at the New Mountain School. And it was for, for active shooter. And what we found is our ballistic protection has actually expired. So this will replace, uh, all of our ballistic protection and get eight new sets, uh, for the firefighters going forward.
So they don't wear ballistic protection all the time, only if you ever have a, a situation like that?
They're starting to wear it more and more, not only for these situations, but if you have a violent incident, maybe where someone potentially has a knife or other object that...
Your, your ambulance crews especially.
Correct. Um, and again, when you look at the change in dynamics out there and the environment that we live in today, um, these, this ballistic protection is in the national standard for firing NMS services based at the F3,000. Um, so it's not just East Hampton firefighter. This is the norm for all, all firing NMS across the country. They're expected, when you have any incident like this, to break it down into hot, warm and cold zones. They are now expected to operate in the warm zones with the safety protocol.
Let me ask you then, again, do your fire, do your ambulance crews go out with ballistic protection as a matter of procedure? Or they only put it on when they know what the call is?
Right now, it's based on what the call is.
Okay. I imagine it's heavy.
It's...
It's not a suit of armor, but...
It covers some and certainly reduces mobility. But, um, when you look at what it does for life safety, I don't think people really...
They don't complain.
No. And then the last one is building repairs. Um, recently, we've, uh, worked with the mayor and her staff and the city union. We did a walk through the building. We really want to look at, were we missing anything in terms of security and safety throughout that building that we live in 24/7? We've identified some different lock-in mechanisms that we had updated and changed. Uh, the diesel exhaust system downstairs, that is hooked up to every emergency vehicle. So when these vehicles start up, instead of having the exhaust run for 30 seconds to a minute inside of the building and then go out throughout the, um, structure that has car synergins in it, it goes through this primal vent system that then exhausts directly out through the, through the ventilation system. So that would go to the annual service for that. And then the last one I ident, I identified on there, it says vision 21 system. Again, for this committee and for the public, in fire dispatch, there are two monitoring devices. So any, um, system out there where there's a... So any um, system out there where there's a fire alarm, when that activates, it comes into fire dispatch monitor. And received by this vision twenty-one system. Again, that need, those two systems need to be serviced annually. So these funds are being requested will cover the cost for that annual service.
Hmm, okay.
And I'm certainly happy to elaborate or answer any questions I did not.
My questions are answered, thank you. Tom?
Uh, yeah, sure.
Um, Omar, anything? I just want to thank you for your service, all you guys. Um, keep the grants coming. Yeah, every, every grant dollar means that another department can use free cash or, or stabilization accounts for something else, so.
Absolutely, we are, I believe, very aggressive and competitive and we always will kind of make those other agencies at least consider and look at our grant applications. So hopefully we'll hear some positive news uh, come on next fall time.
Okay, then I, I move that we approve uh, and send to the full council for true of the supplemental appropriation of one hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. From free cash from to various accounts for the fire department, um, as, as stated.
Second.
We have a motion, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, I. Chief, again, this Wednesday, public hearing.
Yep, and that's in person upstairs.
Yes, you don't have to be in person, but we like seeing you.
Yeah, you can be.
Well, okay. We better see them.
Perfect, okay.
Thank you.
Uh, the next one is the twenty thousand, do that one, then we'll go to the stabilizations. Um, legal budget. Go for it, I guess this is the mayor.
Yeah, I mean, we're seeing an increase here. Um, one, one because of projects that continue um, in um, in the city that need a legal review, contracts. Um, ready, uh, the, a great example of contract with the decarbonization plan and reviewing that. Um, reviewing solar pilots um, with the fiber network. We're looking to put in, we're working out an agreement where we can host their hub in a, a secure room in the basement of public safety that we don't use. Um, and just having those look over. Um, there's also been a lot, um, there've been inquiries from city council that, you know, are billed just anywhere else. We've also had uh, negotiations that are going, are efficient, so we're not seeing big.
You were talking about contracting or?
Yeah, with the unions, um.
So this is also labor, in other words, this isn't just the city attorney, it's a labor attorney, it's.
It's all legal services that we get. Um, so, I mean, we just, we had.
And you tend to budget it conservative, you're leaving it anyway.
Yes.
You wait, see what's.
Just, yeah, I mean, my, my approach to it, I mean, you might see a little increase in the approved budget. Um, because we just, like, it's inflation, hourly rates are going up or whatnot. We might have contracts that we need to negotiate or, or whatnot. You know, there are a couple of years we're trying to allow, when we have more than one big contract up. Um, but also like over time and the appropriations we just saw, um, my approach is to be a little conservative in the budget. And that if we cannot maintain that line, that it's more transparent to come with these appropriations to discuss.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I, I prefer that myself because unless we have really less free cash, it's a better way. I like that in maintenance, I like that in anything we can do, because we don't know, they're unknown, so why put money there for unknowns? Which another department you might want to budget for. So I've always felt that's, all the mayors, I tell them, this is the better way to go. Any questions, Tom? Legal, Omar? Um, then I move that we uh, send to the full council supplemental appropriation of twenty thousand dollars from free cash to the legal budget.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. The last one is the stabilization accounts. Sorry this took so long to get to. Um, obviously, I have no problem saving money. Um, we have a great deal to save. I'm just curious, you generally wait till near the May fiscal year to save this money. Why, why, why now? Why, why?
I mean, just the amount of free cash that, I mean, we certified is unusually high because of what's going on with the fiscal. Um, we also have some switchovers where like for the cars, I'm going to a fleet program, building up capital stabilization to fund the project. All the projects going on around town um, with matches and whatnot, if we get stuck and can't pull it out of operating. Um, but also, you know, the, it's a cliche, but this cliff effect, fact on one level or not, you know, one way or another is real. So it might be a slight impact and a dimple in our economic um, security, but it could be something bigger, so I'd rather.
Could you, could you for the public explain what a cliff effect is?
Is when all the state and federal money related to the pandemic ends.
Uh-huh.
So it needs to be appropriated by the end of twenty-four. And I believe that's calendar twenty-four, so by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Um, and then you have until twenty twenty-six to spend it. So my approach to this is we're spending um, down our ARPA money. Uh, first with this in, in reserve.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for what might come up, and it's not unknown. I mean, we know what our, you know, the capital uh, improvement plan is pretty clear of what we need and when we are reorganizing that. Cause there are some things that we paid for with grants or with um, cares or ARPA money. Uh, and, and also, you know, bonding or whatnot, the, the best hedge against inflation is savings. It's like the biggest thing.
It also tells our bonding companies, this is a safe bet.
Yeah.
We give us a good triple A. Is it triple A now?
No, 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 double A plus.
Well, let's get that other plus, let's go.
I, I can't, I look at, I, it's, it's the regional economy that, that pulls us down.
Well, let me ask this, I don't know if it's Hedo or Jess, we can't use capital stabilization to fund operational accounts. That's gotta be strictly capital, right? DOR rise legally? Hedo?
Yes, yes, it's a specific purpose, um, it's a specific purpose stabilization just designed to deal with the capital expenses.
So if, I heard you right, mayor, general stabilization, just so people know, I have the total figures here. We currently have four point seven eight eight million in gen- general stabilization, this will put us up there. These are the figures you gave me about a month ago, Hedo. Capital was two point eight two seven. Um, my point is if we decide, ARPA money and federal money might be paying for personnel right now.
Right.
In two thousand and twenty-four, when you have to budget to try and save those.
Some of the positions are very specific to ARPA projects.
So they've gone away anyway.
Yeah, um, and some are, you know, um, there are some departments where we use the opportunity of the ARPA money to add. And we have plans uh, to slowly pull them into operating.
You might need some of the general stabilization to cover some of that a little bit.
It, it kind of makes me itchy to think about general stabilization for payroll and.
Well, I, I understand.
I'm not saying we wouldn't.
Bonding companies don't like it either.
Well, we're, you know, I mean, I feel like and, and Hedo and Jessica, I feel like who, the positions we have deemed long-term necessary can be pulled into the general fund operating budget. I'm not worried about that.
Okay.
I mean.
Good news, cause I would, I personally feel like that's a great plan not to use it. I'm just adding things up here.
Mm-hmm.
So there's gonna be. What?
Five, almost six million, five nine hundred, nine eighty-eight in there, based, not including, subtracting what we did already. In general.
Yeah, I think we just did different calculations. What I was asking is how much free cash are we gonna have after this? And I think you, you were calculating.
Oh, I added two million, nine thousand.
Yeah.
Less what we just spent, because we have five point two nine two two zero zero million.
Yeah.
Million.
And like we did last year, I mean, we monitor it and, you know, Hedo and um, I, Jessica are, um. Emily and Nick, the school business manager, like down the line in May, maybe you'll see another request to appropriate money from free cash. Um, to the stabilization accounts. Um, it's great not to lose free cash. We um, over the certification process, we did that last year because we had some real concerns about the CARE Act audit and, and whatnot. Um, we got through it, but it, I think, I, I would not speak for our auditor, but I think our auditor lost ten years of life for that. Um, but, and we ended up not having to pull money out to, to cover that. We just had to give the money back that we spent was, so.
Well, the other thing I thought of, capital stabilization can be used. I'm looking at the DPW and the sewer and water infrastructure and all that. If you end up having to bond, you may take money that, that's gonna be up near four million dollars. Rather than bond, you use some of that money if you end up having to fix something over there.
Yeah.
That you can't fix using enterprise retained earnings, this is where it would come from. Less bonding is cheaper.
Right.
I mean, I, I don't know, that's probably not in your plans right now, but it might be.
I, I would not, I mean, again, anything can happen, but the, I, like, for GPW and those capital items, um, for sewer, wastewater and water, we would pull that out of.
Enterprise.
Enterprise, um, and the rates, I think they're about to vote on a new rate um, plan next week. Uh, that is certainly gonna um, be noticed and felt by residents and businesses, but candidly. I, if, you know, it, I don't know. I would hope that it had gone up more, although with our, the condition of the economy, it wasn't the right thing to do. But to build up that reserve, that the enterprise, I am concerned about our federal obligations there that would come out. Um, of enterprise, so, but the idea would be go after grants. Um, right, just went after a grant for, I think, storm water, that's about eight hundred and ninety.
I keep picking figures of twenty million dollars and.
It is combined it.
If you put it all together, all, I know general stabilization, I'm sorry, capital stabilization would be a last resort.
And it's.
But it makes me feel better that it's there.
Fair enough.
If the wastewater treatment plant suddenly fails or something catastrophe happens and they don't have it in their capacity.
We, we could stop paying everyone. We could do, we could empty all that, we still would not have the money to fix my squander.
Don't tell me that, I don't want to know.
Uh, but there's money out there, grant money, and, you know, we just have to keep our eye on the, the enterprise account and, you know, we're, we're using some of it. And, you know, GPW went through a lot, uh, the board went through a lot of hard work to, to arrive at the schedule you'll, you'll vote on.
For the public's purposes, I'm just stating that stabilization accounts carry over from fiscal year to fiscal year. They're savings accounts, rainy day money is somewhat you, term used. When we have free cash, we never know what that'll be. If we don't put free cash in the stabilization, it has to be recertified. And we don't know if there's some deficit that'll have to cover uh, using that free cash. So if you put it into stabilization, the only way it can come out is a sixth vote of the city council and appropriation from the mayor. But it's permanent in a sense, it doesn't go away at the end of the fiscal year. Whereas at the end of the fiscal year, all the other accounts have to be re, recertified and, and closed. And we may not, if we left three million in free cash in there, we might not get it back. This is a way to save it. And given, given the possibility of recession, I'm very happy we have this. I know Tom is worried about that, so.
I, yeah, I mean, I would just add on, you know, there might be some questions with that much free cash, you know, why aren't we spending more and whatnot? And I, I think that the financial team would have maybe come out with different recommendations. I would have made different decisions if the economy, as much as it can be, looked a little more rosy. Um, definitely instead of this up and down. And um, we are not a wealthy city, we don't have um, a lot of, you don't have hotel tax and meal tax and, and whatnot.
Don't have a mall.
Thing, yeah, okay, but I, I don't, but that's, that's what the idea is, it's not that. And we conserve it, we budget very conservatively as Hedo was saying, which serves us well.
I agree with that. And I also like the tax rate stabilization, because that reduces taxes. It's a small amount, but it helps, so.
On that point, what, like, for three hundred thousand dollars, what, how much like per taxpayer is that reducing right now? I know we did this map a little while back.
And, and what's the total amount in tax rate? We didn't use it all last year, did we, Hedo?
Oh, you're. No, we didn't. No, we didn't. Uh, we only, I think we budgeted three hundred thousand and we used hundred and fifty. Um, so we just use it towards our revenue estimates.
So again.
And I do not know, oops, sorry. Um, and I do not know per taxpayer bill, what's the effect on individual taxpayers' bill.
Okay. And, and there, the idea is, you know, with the calculations and revenue expectation, use it, it's a balance. Um, with the amount of new growth and value going on in the city, while it's a lot, um. It wasn't to the point where I felt like we needed to dip in this more, having money sitting there. Um, Hedo is able to use it as needed to balance. It does help the tax rate. Um, there can be more dire situations going up forward where we would use more of it. But again, it's great um, to have it there and if worse comes to worse, you know, you could vote it out, so, meaning you could vote it out.
Or you have to ask us to do that first.
I'm not asking, yeah.
Um, and it can't happen unless you're.
I'm just saying.
Um, I don't have any other questions. Omar? Um, yeah, sure.
Um, I guess my one question would be, get, like, the, the two million that would be remaining, you're, do you feel good that that's gonna be enough to cover the, the, the remaining like free cash requests for this fiscal year, just given what, what's come to you?
Um, I've said no to stuff, you know, and, and worked on a couple of solutions with the department heads, or they've come back and say, okay, like, the ninety-two, we understand enough or cut it, yeah. Um, but I feel good about the two million, we'll, I, I think we'll be okay. Do I think maybe I'm saying no a little more next fiscal year? Probably.
Well, going back to the fleet stuff, is that, are you targeting capital stabilization for that whole thing?
Yes, but not all at once, I'm gonna.
No, but, but because it's there, you don't have to try to get rid of it before the end of a fiscal year.
Right, uh, uh, sort of like the, the water meters, right? It's built in to the GPW budget that we replace one-third of our water meters every year.
Right.
Right, and, and the, the police and fire have the same thing, where things are on schedule, where we're buying oxygen tanks, you know, so many of them every year, no matter what. So it, it would be similar to that.
But just to go to Tom's question, we normally buy a lot of vehicles for all the departments. If they're all going into this fleet system that the mayor's talking about, free cash is left for the other things that come our way. If I understand, your plan is to try and.
Yes.
Do that as a fleet, and you might use capital stabilization to do so.
I mean, that's how we want to set it up on our books.
Now, Cap, just follow up on our bonding companies. Capital stabilization used to purchase a new fire truck, that doesn't hurt us, does it? Not with the bonding company, it's tax rate stabilization.
It's specific.
It's specific for those things, because capital stabilization is specific. I'm sorry, yes, it's specific. It can only be used for capital, it can't be used for operational expenses. Okay? Anything else, Tom?
Oh, no, that's all.
Then I move that we send to the full council supplemental appropriation for three million dollars from free cash to three stabilization accounts.
Second. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. That's up for, you'll probably be asked to explain
Yeah.
why on all of these this week. I wanted to ask something since we're getting near the end of the of the ARPA funding and everything. Do we need these quarterly reports for COVID nineteen? Because I haven't asked for them in a while.
I mean, the CARE Act report, final reports on the website.
So it's already out.
So that's there. And the ARPA spreadsheet, well, I'm holding that up because I haven't filled out my part of the spreadsheet. Um, of just my justification of where we spent, what planned, but we have a spreadsheet. I need, I need.
Well, I'm asking the finance committee and Omar, do we need this here to get explanations from the mayor when she gets that done or? I don't feel we need it. That's just me. But what do you think?
Well, when it's done, I wouldn't mind discussing it just because I think it'll be a matter of some public interest, but I don't know if we need quarterly reports on it going forward. I would like to keep doing the reports with the city audit.
Oh, that's always the case. And and e- every quarter, we we ask for those, but the, on the case of the grant funding, um, we can put that in as a, as an agenda item
Yeah.
when they're all done. And you intend to publish them anyway.
Yeah, I have to.
Then I'm gonna move that we remove quarterly reports as a continuing business item.
Uh, sure, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. So we'll go for those when, and I'll mention that they're gonna be on the website. Um, the reports you already have, some of them up there.
Care is up.
Care is up. ARPA will come. And that we'll discuss them at some other future. We can put an agenda item in it. Okay, I'd like to do that.
Okay.
All right, our next meeting is February twenty-second, because I assume we're having more free cash coming our way. Yes, okay. He's smiling. All right, well, that's why I sent Salem the paper. Okay, I have another, nothing else to discuss. I move that we adjourn.
Uh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. I'm gonna shut up. Thank you, Hedo, for your time.
Yeah.